Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, at 6:00 PM we're going to call the meeting to order. In the absence of our mayor tonight, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint our senior council member, Marina Brooks, as our chairperson tonight.
Second motion. Hi. Aye. Williams?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Brooks?
I'm staying.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Kepplinger?
Aye.
I'm just sitting here.
No, you come up here.
And you'll take your seat.
All right, I would like to call on Robert, our senior citizen director, to do the prayer this evening.
That's all, friend. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love and your mercy and goodness to everyone. We ask now that you bless the city council, Lord, and each elected member, give them wisdom, understanding, compassion, as they try and lead and guide this city in the future. We also want to ask that you protect you from our police and our fire and each and everyone here tonight.
Amen.
Jill, stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Jill, call the row, please. Brooks? Here. Harmon?
Here.
Lilly?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Aye. Here. Kepplinger?
Here.
Yes, okay.
It's four, you know, they can call.
Okay. On the May 28th, many, May 2018 financials, did anyone have any questions on those? All right, moving along, we have a motion to waive the reading requirements this evening.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Call the row, please. Hi. Aye. Williams?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Kepplinger?
Aye.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call Chief David Teague up to do some fire department award presentations.
I'm David Teague, I'm the chief here for Sherwood Fire Department, and one of the things that we wanted to do, day in, day out, our guys, your guys, and gals, our guys, making calls, making drastic differences in people's lives, and one of the things that we wanted to share with you is some of the successes that we've had, and one of the things that we're going to talk about tonight and give some awards tonight is a life-saving award, but before we do that, I want to tell you one thing that we do, that probably nobody else around, if we get a call and somebody is not breathing, unresponsive, or whatever, we immediately send somebody, but we also, something that nobody else does, Northland Rock, we actually feel everybody sends a fire truck, but what we also do, because of the change in CPR and emergency medicine, we send another fire truck and generally a battalion chief, because we need more than just three or four people to work this person, whatever medical emergency it may have, if they're not breathing, or if they're doing CPR or whatever. And we've been doing that for about a year now, where we send extra people, and it's worked out really well, and so, wanted to share one story about that with you. On January 14, 2018, Sherwood Fire Department and MEMS responded to a call for an unresponsive patient. Sherwood dispatch updated responding units that it was unknown if the patient was breathing. Engine two, rescue one, and battalion one arrived on scene, finding the patient in cardiac arrest. CPR was initiated and continued while MEMS set up advanced cardiac life support. Sherwood Fire and MEMS crews worked collectively and diligently to treat and transport the patient to an area hospital. Due to fast response times and quick initiation of life-saving efforts, the patient is alive today and back home with family. The patient continues, but physical therapy is expected to make a full recovery. I would like to recognize these first responders and their efforts. Without such, it is unlikely that the patient would have survived, and we're hoping everything's quiet for the next two minutes, because these guys are all working. I'd like to call up Peyton Jolly, Bradley Webb, Jeff McAllister, and Battalion Chief Jody Hartman. Like I say, these guys are very, eighty percent of our calls are EMS calls, or EMS-related. So while we do fire, we feel like we sent, you know, four fire trucks to the fire, and because there may be light and property in danger, why not send multiple units if it's an EMS call and it might make a big difference. One other thing that I wanted to let you all know about, in conjunction with the police department, Sherwood Police Department, starting July 1, we're going to start carrying a drug called Narcan. And this is, you've been hearing all over TV about the overdose, opioid problems, and the drug that we're going to carry, it's the only drug, the oxygen that the fire department carries, but it reverses the overdoses, and here in Sherwood, you may not hear about it, but we're having quite a few and all that, so, starting July 1, we'll be doing even more of this kind of stuff, life-saving things, and with the police, and I want to thank tonight the thank the police chief for having his guys come to our calls. We, our guys work very well together, and the police get in there, do CPR, does like fire, and it's just a real good public safety group of people, police and fire, and Sherwood has, and I want to congratulate these guys on the job they're doing. And they're going to go back to work.
Great job, guys.
As a board member of the Sherwood Fire Department, I want to, we all commend them, and we commend the chief and battalion chief for their forthright of coming forward with this Narcan program and things like that. Cities don't have it, but there's a lot of training involved, there's a lot of coordination with the health department and things that has to go into that, and we're very proud of our fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Committees and commission reports, advertising and promotions commission, we did meet, and I'm just going to report real quickly, the minutes are in the packet, if anyone has any questions, the main thing is that in July, Sherwood AMP does not meet, we do, every July, we don't meet, so there'll be no meeting until August. Does anyone have any questions? All right, seeing none. Civil service, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec did meet. Razorbacks were playing that night also, so I will have you know I ran a three-minute meeting. But in that time, we voted on, we proposed and voted on a change to the rules at the greens at North Hills for the age for driving golf carts. It's been since the golf course opened that you had to be eighteen to drive a golf cart. A number of the other golf courses in the area, including golf courses where the high schools compete and things, they are allowed to drive at sixteen, so we voted unanimously to propose a change for the greens at North Hills to sixteen with a driver's license, with an active driver's license. This needs to come before the city council, but it just needs to come as a rules change. So I'm asking for a vote from the city council to approve a rules change for the greens at North Hills, that the, a sixteen-year-old be allowed to drive a golf cart with a driver's license. This has been recommended by the unanimous recommendation from the Parks and Rec committee, so that we're, basically, we match up with most of the other golf courses that we're competing with.
So moved.
I'll second that, but may I ask a question? When they have the high school tournaments, do they ride in the carts or they walk the tournaments?
It depends. Some places they ride, some places they walk, most places they walk, but when they come practice, a lot of times, they'd like to ride, they ride in the carts and stuff when they practice.
Thank you for that clarification. Aye.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Kepplinger?
That's all I have. Our meeting this month will be the second Monday of the month at 6:00 PM, if we have anything for the agenda, but I doubt we'll have anything for the agenda this month, so I doubt we'll have a Parks and Rec meeting.
Thank you. Personnel committee?
We did not meet, and as all of you know, we are in search of a new HR director, so until that time, we probably will not meet for a while, so we have something come up, we'll put it out there.
Thank you. If you'll take over the agenda, Mr. Cobb?
An ordinance bringing an appeal of an adverse decision from the Sherwood Arkansas Planning Commission and for other purposes.
Mr. Middleton, you want to address the council and explain the planning commission?
Yes. Just this is, just this is an appeal. I feel we owe it to the city council to explain the basics for the decisions that the planning commission unanimously made to not endorse this proposal, and I will say right off about two things. One, we cannot get a updated land use plan fast enough, because that would solve a lot of problems that we're experiencing right now, making decisions like this, and two, I want to thank Steve Deere for giving me a headache. First step in making a decision about a rezone is always, does it comply with the land use plan? Zoning does not take place in isolation, it is only intended to carry out and execute the terms of the land use plan. The current land use plan, which you're seeing up there, shows floodplain and a little sliver of single-family detached residential on the property. I will start out by saying that floodplain really is not a land use, it's a development constraint, that's something that in my mind needs to be fixed, but in the land use plan, there's a whole lot of changes that need to be placed. We've heard discussion about whether our C4 commercial activities up north in the Gravel Ridge neighborhood, well, that's because the updated land use plan, the only place in the city where you have highway strip commercial is all the way through Gravel Ridge. So the land use plan is not very helpful in terms of making a decision about whether this is an appropriate zoning classification, normally, that's what you would look for. So the second rail that we look for is what kinds of uses are appropriate. Did an analysis of the differences between C3 zoning, which is the current site, and C4, which is being proposed, and I noticed something that there's some discrepancy about when C3 zoning took place in the first place, when the Gravel Ridge area was annexed into the city, it came in, all of the property was by default R1, and in that twenty, 2008, in December, there was a map and a rezoning of all of that area and a part of the rest of the city, which didn't make sense to me, and it looks like this particular parcel at that time was zoned C3, and there had been some subsequent rezones from 2008 through 2010, north of Kellogg Creek to C4. It's not very clear in the land use plan or in the annexation zoning ordinance what the zoning classifications were really, I mean, the map is just very unclear, but it looks like C3 was what it was. What I didn't understand was that there was another ordinance, I think it was 1885, on the map, that also zoned it C3, so it was, in effect, zoned C3 twice, and it was zoned from floodplain to C3. So I asked myself, what in the world is going on here? Right now, there, the difference between C3 and C4, which is kind of a paramount importance, if the land use plan isn't telling you anything, there are thirty-nine uses that are allowed in C4 that are not allowed in C3. Otherwise, C3 and C4, there's a hundred and thirty-two uses that are allowed in both of them, so the question then becomes if, what's the real difference? The other thing is that twenty-six of those thirty-nine are also allowed in the industrial zone. Clearly, the C4 zone is some transition between regular commercial and industrial, and one of the concerns of the commission, if the general, if the land use plan doesn't explain very well what the intended use ought to be, either amend the plan, or you go to the ordinance that covers the zoning. In the zoning regulations, there's fifteen zoning classifications in the city. Every one of them has a statement of purpose, only two of them are location-specific, C3 and C4. What the zoning regulations say in C3 is that the most appropriate location for a C3 zoning is along the corridors of 107 and East Kiel Avenue. The only, and C4 says that the most appropriate locations for a C4 zone is along the 67-167 corridor and intersections with 161. I did a look at the map, if we're going to make a decision on the specific, the guidance that right now is in front of us is the specific, not the general, and so I took a look at the distribution of zoning, and in Sherwood, there's about five hundred and sixty acres in C4 zoning classification, eleven of those acres are in the Gravel Ridge neighborhood, that's two percent of the total, so clearly, the policy for years has been to stick with what's in the ordinance, which is C4 along the 67-167 corridor. Absent any other guidance, that's what the planning commission went with. Our sense was that as a result of the planning work that's being done with vision and planning process, to update that, did I mention we need to update the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple times.
It's about the third time.
There'll be four or five for them, but as a result of that, some of the discussions we have heard was that there's a sense that the intersection of Brockington and 107 is kind of the center of gravity for the community, and we'd like to see that developed properly, and that basically, the Kellogg floodplain area represents a possible opportunity for recreational activities, which would give Sherwood an edge that some other cities just simply don't have. And then the planning commission's sense was that we did not think that it was appropriate to go for a higher-use commercial activity in front of what may be some changes in the land use plan that would reflect something different. The other thing that concerned us is that when you adopt a zoning classification, you really don't look at what the proposed use is. What you are approving is these uses, all hundred and forty-eight uses, that are eligible in a C4 zone. I say, there's only a difference, not too much difference between C3 and C4, but our concern is that we, the application and the materials that the planning commission got did not specify what the intended use was, and given that about eighty percent of all of the uses in C4 are also eligible in C3, you just have to figure that it's one of the thirty-nine uses that's not eligible for C3 that we're looking at, and our concern was that no, you cannot dictate what the use, specific use is when you change the zone. You change the zone, and when it's locked in, they can put in anything that's allowed in that zone, which in this case, in C4, different from C3, includes automobile dealerships, flea markets, outdoor flea markets, sexual-oriented businesses, and some other things that I'm not real sure. We weren't willing to take a chance that some of those uses might come into play after this was approved, because when it's approved, it's a card laying. Our, the commission's sense was, beyond that, was that if you approve something else, if you approve a C4, what we would really appreciate, regardless of what your decision is, what we would appreciate is some specific understanding of what the reasons are for your decision, because this, we're going to get hit with this again, and we want to be sure that if we're not sticking to C4 along the 67-167 corridor, that we want to know what the policy position of the council is so that we can react fairly to anybody else who makes an application in another part of the city. Do you have questions?
I, I've got a question.
Okay.
Um, so you mentioned some of the things, but isn't it things also like a tractor supply store, a garden center, isn't it outside storage, isn't that what differentiates between the two, and if so, wouldn't the Polaris, I mean, that's an outstanding business right on the other side of the creek, I know it's C3, but the way I read that C4, it really looks like it's C4, not C3, and we wouldn't want to do a... And that's, that's, I mean, am I reading that wrong, or is that...
I wouldn't pretend to know the details of every use in all of those categories, but I would say that my general observation is that some outdoor storage is allowed in C3, but not the kind of extensive storage that's allowed in C4, based on the kinds of uses permitted.
For instance, we've allowed conditional outside storage to approve Walmart, which is a C3. Walmart has outside storage, and that was a, that's a conditional, conditional use, C3 for outside storage.
I thought that was due to their hours being twenty-four hours, but I thought...
Also, they have outside storage for their, what is it, their garden, garden center?
Right, but once again, in that, so, for example, I thought for the most part, C3, everything had to be brought in at night, with the exception of Walmart, is that the case?
But it's a conditional, yeah, I think you're right then, and I noted outside storage when he was talking, and I've always, I've always felt the same way, that a lot of the difference between those uses is, a lot of the difference, or a lot of them, we have most of our outside storage uses have been placed in C4 over the years, and maybe all of our outside storage uses have been placed in C4 over the years, but that's not the only difference. For instance, I very seldom see a sexually-oriented business store their stuff outside, it's just not, but, so, I think the primary, the primary purpose for C4 has been, I think, as was stated in the original zoning ordinance, to main, to, to, to put this type of, to place businesses in C4 that we felt like were the type of business that we wanted to keep on the freeway and out of areas that were central Sherwood, that were Sherwood proper, and things of that nature. Polaris also was, I'm told, grandfathered in, that's true, Polaris was there, Polaris was there before it came in, and Polaris may be C4, a lot of, a lot of the C4 in Gravel Ridge was grandfathered in.
There's only five properties at C4, and four of them, there's, they're car lots, basically, were outside...
And they were grandfathered, they were grandfathered, they were grandfathered in. We approved one C4 since, we've approved one C4 in Gravel Ridge since it's been annexed, right?
I thought there was a big lot, too, that is zoned to C4, that is sitting empty out there at this current time, that was also zoned to C4.
At the very north end, as you go around by Hatchet Road, there is, there is, and how in the world that got zoned C4, I have no idea, it was done before, but...
Well, grandfathered may be not technically accurate, because there are four ordinances on the books between July of 2009 and March of 2010 that rezoned some of those, four of those properties to C4.
Which are car lots...
Well, yeah, they come in, they come in as R1, they come in as R1, but I guess I'd just say the use is grandfathered. Their use is grandfathered in, regardless of what the zoning is, the use is grandfathered in, but I...
Four of those, like I said, were car lots and a equipment rental place.
Right.
At the time, they were all car lots at that time.
Right, we had the tractor, was the tractor place the equipment rental place?
Well, there was a tractor, there is, that's, at the time, there was a tractor place, right by the, right by the buck stops.
Right, and he was, he was, he was C4, too, at the time, because I remember him coming to the meetings that we had. Well, I, personally, I, you know, I felt like, then, that we open a door if we, if we have C4 anywhere else in Sherwood, because those uses, and I love, I love the fact that you said something, you made the comment that we're not supposed to look at what the use is, because that's something, that's, that's a Bible I've beat on for years, sitting here at this seat, that we're not supposed to ask what they're planning to use the property for, and it's, it's true, and I know people always want to know that, and I notice when I read your minutes, people will always say, well, I want to know what the property's being used for, well, you know, that's, we can't consider what the property's being used for, and we're supposed to put that out of our minds, and we're, what we're told at our municipal league's meetings, that that's an inappropriate question for us to even ask what the property's being used for, from a council member's standpoint, that we're supposed to strictly look at the use of the property, I mean, not the use of the property, but the zoning of the property, and then consider all those classifications, and consider, you know, or any of these classifications, will we consider any of these classifications inappropriate for that particular tract of land? And C4, I think, is a classification that is appropriate for 67-167, and that has been, and has been, and has, you know, the city of Sherwood has grown tremendously using that policy, that we keep C4 on 67-167. I think we need to adopt that, continue to adopt that policy, I think we need to make it a ironclad policy that we stick with, and I think we need to stick with it no matter what. I mean, we've moved some things into C4, we need to say, okay, the things we've moved into C4, they're C4 now, they go on 67-167 no matter what. If they come up here, they're not going to go outside of, outside of 67-167, because we moved them into C4, and when we did that, we did it with intentional purpose, that when we did that, they're going to go on 67-167, they're going to go where C4 goes, because they're in that classification of property that we consider onerous enough or whatever, that it gets to stay outside of Sherwood proper, where we're wanting this other type of growth to occur. And I agree, too, with your comment, that I think that, you know, the new center of Sherwood is going to be the four corners, Brockington 107, I think that's a good comment as well, I think that's going to be the new, the new center of Sherwood, I think that's, that's where Sherwood's growing, and I think that's, that its development goes, that's where it's going to go, but that's my, that's my thoughts on it.
Are, I heard some talk, too, that, in fact, I talked to our city engineer about this, so, there's talk that we really need a C5, that because we can miss some excellent opportunities by turning down and putting, having things in C4, that really could be in a separate, we should have industrial zoning, and we should have a C5 for your car lots and things such as that, but a C4, like I say, can also be a home and garden store, it could, it could be a Lowe's, it could be a feed store, you know, a tractor supply store, I mean, some things that would be excellent to go in an area like that, we could be missing those opportunities by the way we are limited on our C4 and nothing other than C4. Is that accurate or not?
I respond to observations, one, was that, I think it was a consensus of the planning commission, that we see it fairly likely, that that property and areas around it are likely to go commercial and/or mixed use. We would, I would expect the updated land use plan to reflect that, we shall see. The second, the land use plan would drive what zoning classifications ought to be. There's a couple of options, and...
And I agree too with your comment that I think that, you know, the new center of Sherwood is going to be the four corners, Brockington, one oh seven. I think that's a good comment as well. I think that's going to be the new, the new center of Sherwood. I think that's, that's where Sherwood's growing, and I think that's, that its development goes, that's where it's going to go. But that's my, that's my thoughts on it.
Are, are, I, I heard some talk too that, in fact, I talked to our, our city engineer about this. So there's talk that we really need a C five. That because we can miss some excellent opportunities by turning down and putting, having things in C four, that really could be in a separate, we should have industrial zoning and we should have a, a C five for your car lots and things such as that. But a C four, like I said, can also be a home and garden store. It could, it could be a Lowe's, it could be a feed store, you know, a tractor supply store. I mean, some things that would be excellent to go in an area like that. We could be missing those opportunities by the way we are limited on our C four and nothing other than C four. Is that accurate or not?
I respond to observations. One was that, I think it was a consensus of the planning commission that we see it fairly likely that that property and areas around it are likely to go commercial and/or mixed use. We would, I would expect the updated land use plan to reflect that. We shall see. The second, the land use plan would drive what zoning classifications ought to be. There's a couple of options, and, and I'll add that, that the commission's general sense that some commercial development probably would be appropriate at some point. We think that maybe the revised planned unit development option would be something that might be looked at, depending on what's being proposed. At this point, we don't really know. And some other zoning classification that makes more sense, and/or some revisions to the uses. For instance, we've got some uses that are permitted outright only in C four that realistically could be permitted conditionally in C three. Sometimes I think the outright throws the baby out with the bathwater. So I think part of our agenda over the next year or so is to look at those uses and see if they really reflect what we think ought to be in those zoning classifications. Quite frankly, without any further knowledge about it, it looks like the uses have sort of accreted over the years. They've just been piling in there and added on, nothing's been changed. And I think that's something we ought to look at.
Does anyone else have any questions of our planning commission chairman? May call him back in a minute. Okay. The property owner, Steve Dear, would like to speak?
Oh, please. And I appreciate everything Rob's doing. I think he's doing a great job as our new chair of planning commission. One thing though, I think we did have a rezoning in two thousand and twelve of C four out there. And I appreciate what Charlie's saying, but I think Charlie and Kevin, Raina, I don't know who all went on, who was on the city council in two thousand and nine, but we've done five rezonings of C four out there in this area. And it hadn't been restricted to sixty seven, one sixty, sixty seven, one sixty seven was designated as C four in nineteen eighty-eight. Then we updated our zoning map or our planning map in two thousand, and then in two thousand and four. And it hasn't been updated since then. Also, if you drive out through there, there's five pieces that have been rezoned, C four, only one of them is a car lot at this time. And there's about fourteen or fifteen other businesses that are operating that would require C four zoning up and down through there. So that makes a total of like eighteen to twenty units up through there. There was a car wash approved on the corner of Brockington and one oh seven, which maybe I don't know how to understand completely everything in our zoning, but it says, car washes that have cleaners, steam cleaners, vacuums, things like that have to be in C four. And that's in C three. And I know of two or three other uses in this area of businesses that were sold since the annexation. They came in as non-conforming, they were sold, the people are running a different business out of it, not the same type of business. And they're operating a C four business and a C three zoning. So, I mean, it seems like, it's kind of like, some people get C four, but I don't. Anyway, just want to throw that out there, so I appreciate your consideration.
So from a legal standpoint, Mr. Dear, if you'd stay up here, because I think some people may have some questions for you, go ahead.
So from a, from a legal standpoint, I know that we have been told that zoning, you have to do, zone to the highest purpose, basically within reason. Is that correct?
Highest.
To the highest use. Okay.
I mean, I'm not sure I understand.
So, well, I mean, is, is that correct? When we're looking at zoning, that's one of the things that we are supposed legally. So I, I guess my question is, couldn't, you, you've heard what Mr. Dear had to say, are we being consistent? And how does that potentially affect us legally in terms of court and so forth?
I think that's what Rob asked for. He's asked for us to develop a, a consistent rule. And what Mr. Dear is saying, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't say Rob, Mr. Milton, is asked for is, is a consistent rule. And what Mr. Dear is saying is that we, he's, actually what Mr. Dear has done is he's come up and made Mr. Milton's argument for him. He said that we have not had consistency in the past, and that, you know, that there's been, you know, we've not been tending business, we've not had consistency in the past on the, the way we've handled our C four zoning, and we need a rule. You know, so all I'm hearing from both of them is we need a rule, we need some consistency, we need a way to handle C four. Now, you, you know, developing a rule and sticking with it, you're not going to get in trouble for developing a rule and sticking with it.
Chairperson, Mr. Chair. Many of us remember back in October, I believe, we denied on one oh seven, close to Maryland one oh seven, a C four. And y'all remember? And we sent them back to work with the planning commission to look at a PED, am I saying the right initials? One of those initial things. And I think that, that we, our argument at that time, because, I may, wasn't back in October, it may have been three months ago. In October, when we had an issue before us off Brockington, we changed and required some things to be in C four that were not, did not, were not in C four originally. Then we had, three months ago, a gentleman that came to us wanting to do something on one oh seven in Maryland area and wanted us to, to rezon that C four.
If you were to put it storage units.
Well, and we sent it back.
That was pulled.
It was, it was pulled.
We didn't deny.
It never came before us.
It was on our agenda, it was pulled for them to go back and work on the PED.
We didn't require that.
I realize, it wasn't on the recommendation.
Right. But it was recommendation then. But the question is that we seem to, this is what Mr. Dear and I had a conversation today about, this is, it's kind of like, see, can you do a conditional use with C three without having it be C four is my question. Because for us to be consistent, when we said things need to be on sixty seven, one sixty seven.
Well, first off, that's not being consistent, because you've already negated that consistency with these other five zoning. And that rule does not say only on one sixty seven, sixty seven. It says a suggested area of sixty seven, one sixty seven. So the consistency, the inconsistency, we would be voting against it, the way I see it.
Yeah.
I mean, when you've had five rezonings in the last five or six, seven years, that have all been approved.
I thought the last one was two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and twelve, November of two thousand and twelve. Want to add this?
I do want to know what it was.
It was at, I got a bunch up here. It was at fourteen thousand three, fourteen, three oh seven, highway one oh seven.
Yeah, my, my, my-
Give me a second.
What's that?
Get a question answered.
Which is what property? Do we know what that is?
My, my, my concern about, let's go back, the questions you asked was about the one on Maryland one oh seven. That's all surrounded by R one houses. So I could see, if it had came to us-
C three too.
No.
Is it insurance business or outside C three?
I think it's an R one. But anyway.
It's a bank, so it's-
But, but still, it, it's surrounded by R one. One thing I can tell you about business, business changes all the time. I understand in our city, we want to take and we want to have consistencies, and we want to have, develop a plan, but we really don't have the plan right now. But we're making a decision on a business right now, even though we don't have the, the, had the, the actual, you know, we, we know where we're, we want C threes, we want C fours, but the land use plan is not really, it needs to be developed, it needs to be updated. That area out there, Mr. Dear, I mean, if it wasn't for Mr. Dear, that land would still be in a swamp, because he, he built that land. He made that island out of, out of smuck, whatever you call it, smuck or whatever it's called. But, but, anyway, he built that land. That land, he, he brought it up out of a swamp, and I think it's, it'd be a good area if he, if he, because I understand he's wanting to build a little strip center and some, and uh-
What, what I want is the ability to put storage units possibly behind a strip center. The property, you know, strip center.
C three.
I mean, about eighty or a hundred feet. I got another two hundred and forty foot of land behind me that, what I do-
Now, I know we're not supposed to take that into consideration, but what else are you going to put in that area in through there? I mean, it's, you're sitting in, in a area that it's, basically it's a swamp. So-
There, there are some uses that could use that depth if they would buy it for something that would go in, have business, go in, turn around, come back out, wouldn't need that much depth. But not, not a strip center shopping wouldn't. I mean, there's-
Councilmember McMahon, did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. I, I, I do want to make a statement though, if, if that's okay.
Sure.
I mean, the, the planning commission has dedicated themselves to getting the rezoning and all the details worked out. I think it behooves us as city council to give them that opportunity before we make a decision like this. Because I agree with what Mr. Middleton says, if we grant a C four, then we are opening ourselves up from here on out. And we don't have the control over what they can put out there. So I would say that our best recommendation here tonight would be to deny this C four, give this planning commission the opportunity to do the work that they're doing, bring that back to us, and then let us see what we can do to address these situations. I think that's fair for everybody concerned. Otherwise, we're just overriding what the planning commission is trying to do.
I agree. And I, and I hear, and I hear Steve, Mr. Dear, his first names.
You can call him Rob.
I, I, I hear what he's saying about the, the zoning classifications, you know, there's been these, these, the C four zonings in, in the gravel ridge area, and since two thousand and twelve and prior, since we've annexed gravel ridge. And there may have, my memory's not that great, I think we, I remember one of them, I don't remember all of them, but I remember one of them. But, you know, the fact of the matter was, when gravel ridge came in, discussions were had about the fact that gravel ridge had a different character. It was of a different character than the existing Sherwood was where one oh seven was concerned. And the rule had been up to that point that there was no C four on one oh seven. And up to that point, C four had not been approved on one oh seven. And then we discussed the fact that perhaps, then we had a meeting with some of the people from, from gravel ridge, including the man that owned the tractor field. I remember he was one of the lead speakers at that meeting. He talked about the fact that, you know, they wanted to make sure their property was approved because they had existing C fours uses. They would make sure their property came in as C four, so they could continue to use their property the way we use. And we talked about the fact that there may be C four uses in the gravel ridge area and beyond on one oh seven, but there has to be a line. Just because we may have approved some C four in gravel ridge at some point, there would still have to be a line, but where do we draw that line? And I think it's better, personally, to go back to our original plan, a recommendation of using sixty seven, one sixty seven as our guideline for C four. And because, you know, we've also heard from, there was also some, some people who came to the meeting from gravel ridge that said they didn't, they, they, they liked the way that gravel ridge has developed since Sherwood has taken over, the way gravel ridge has begun to grow and develops since Sherwood has, has annexed it. And they didn't want this developed as C four. They wanted to see something different go in there. I like that, and I liked hearing that. So I think, I just think it's better to go the other way. And to, to Ken's comment, you know, I hear what Steve says he wants to put there, and I believe that's what he plans to put there, but if it didn't work out, you know, we have these other uses. And to Ken's comment about the fact that, you know, businesses change all the time, and, you know, you, you need to put a business in, you need to start, everything else, that's right. Because at some point, at one point, there was a first car lot on sixty seven, one sixty seven. There was a seed. And now there's thirty of them. And, you know, I don't want there to be a first car lot on one oh seven. And, and it become the seed for car lots on one oh seven.
There are, there are.
Well, I mean, I don't want there to be a first car lot at Brockington and one oh seven, and it to become a seed.
But I, I sure, I sure would like to see some strip centers going in, and I don't care if there's a-
That's C three.
We, C three, that's C three.
But you have to have C four to put a strip, put some storage units behind.
All right. Let's, 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 Councilmember Sanders speak, he hasn't spoken yet.
Here's, here, we've all seen the twenty forty, we all split up and I think all of you have seen that, that initiative, I guess. It's all moving in that direction. And I know that Steve is going to put something great there. My suggestion is build that strip center, back it up, take out the, you know, I'm not going to tell you what to do, obviously, but I, I would rather see a strip center there that with parking in front with shops along there. I don't think anybody has, you know, a problem with that. That's what, because that's where we're going. When we pass the salon place right there and, and the things that, I think your group was talking about having something there across from McDonald's, like a place that little eatery or something, and then pass over that into gravel ridge and see storage facility, I, I just don't think that's a, a good fit. People won't see that. But a nice strip center, that'd be great.
And, and you're right, and I agree with that. But the thing of it is, and, and if he wanted to do a conditional use or something behind there, but whenever you, whenever you plan out a piece of land for a business, you have to look at everything. And, and if, as far as it, is, if I, if I develop this plan, I'm going to put a million dollars down to build this unit, okay? And I, and I have to look at return from what that building's going to cost. So if I, if I've got in my plan to put a strip, or a, a storage unit behind it to supplement that building's return, and if, and if I say, okay, I'm going to build a strip center, and then it comes to the planning commission and they say, no, you can't do that, well, that's unscrutiny in, in the terms of return on my investment.
Is it, is it possible?
That's not, that's not what we're concerned with, people's return on investment, Ken.
Um-
That's not what we, that's not what we analyze.
Uh, Councilmember Howell was asking a question, question. Okay. So we can vote yes, we can vote no. Can we table the item until, so that, until the, the different zoning stuff gets figured out, and then we could see if it can be, so he wouldn't therefore have to potentially have to wait an entire year? Is that an option or is it not? I don't know. I'm asking the legal question.
You can table the item, and you can't bring it back.
If we, if we tabled it, then PUD would be an option for him.
Well, PUD is an option, and everybody keeps talking about a PUD. Are y'all guaranteeing y'all will approve a PUD for me?
We haven't seen it. We haven't seen it.
We can't do that.
I know that, but I mean, everybody has said, well, just do a PUD, just do a PUD. But I've, you know, I've spent twenty or thirty thousand dollars, engineering fees and things on a PUD, and I'm not guaranteed an approval.
Steve, how would you feel in terms of, I, I mean, you've got, you've got two options in terms of you can always go the court system, or you can kind of give some time to let this kind of hash out in terms of getting our zoning regulations and our land ordinance stuff fixed?
Well, I mean, I don't, I'd have to, I'd probably have to research that, because if it's just tabled, I don't know, I don't know what happens if you-
You could, well, you could pull the ordinance tonight and wait for a while and see how this PUD turns out and the other rezoning, the zoning plans that you're coming up with, and then bring it back in a legal-
The land use plan? I'm not sure legally I can do- I'm not sure legally I can do that. I'd have to confer with my own counsel.
Well, if we, if we table it for it to die or table.
We must table it thirty days.
We could table it thirty days.
But you're, you're absolutely right. There's no guarantee that a, that, that you would, that, that a PUD would, would pass either.
Yeah.
I mean.
And, and I don't really think just the past history of working through our system and stuff. I don't see within thirty days, nothing against the commission or anything like that. I don't see within thirty days us coming up with a C five something.
No, but that would give you a chance to say, you know, I, I want to pull this right. I don't want to submit this right now or I do want to go ahead and submit it. It'd give you a chance to talk to council.
Either that or we can go ahead and vote right now.
And, and then you, and if it fails, then you, you got a year to wait.
No, not necessarily. Yeah, go ahead and vote.
All right.
All the questions.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Well, my motion is going to be that we deny the zoning.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second if you'll call the roll.
Hi. Aye. Williams.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Keplinger.
No.
An ordinance resuming the property located at one hundred Fred Rain's drive from R one to C two, a mini zoning map and for other purposes.
Mr. Middleton, again?
May be a busy night for you.
Yes.
This property is basically a kind of catty corner across from Jojo's. And there's a school up there and it's not too far off from the, uh, the public works maintenance facility. Uh, the land use plan currently is calls for community shopping. But looking at the plan up there, the lines, that's part of the problem we've got right now with the way the, the plan is drawn is that it's not imprecise, it's just all over the place. What it's saying though is the bulk of that is clearly community shopping, which clearly is a commercial use. Because of its location and size, it's not really suitable for residential development, even though it's currently zoned R one. That's its current zoning. The, um, our contract city planner recommended that it be C one, even though the application was for C two. His feeling was that the intensity of the uses allowed at C one might be more appropriate as a buffer between the C three, C two and the R one. Our sense was that the difference in uses that are allowed between C one and C two are fairly marginal. They aren't that great. And in either case, we would require a site plan, which would require a buffer for residential properties. It's already funding commercial on two of basically three sides. So we agreed with conditions, as you've seen in the draft ordinance, that this would be approved.
Can you go back to the picture, the front above it, having driven over there? So it does include the vacant lots as well as the wooded areas?
Yes.
Because all of, the majority of that seems wooded, okay.
Yes.
So that, for the two, almost two full acres, okay, thank you.
I, I have, I am not as concerned about the usage, the zoning classification in this case as I am about the condition of the road to tolerate the use.
Amen.
I have traveled this road. My daughter grew up going to that school and going to therapy at that school. And I've driven this road hundreds, if not thousands of times. And it is one of Sherwood's original, oldest still in its original format. And I think still the original asphalt roads. And, uh, to increase traffic on it above what the school already generates, um, is my primary concern, um, with a commercial zoning, a commercial zoning for that property.
Um, we heard several comments on that score. Couple of thoughts. One is that it's clearly for speculative purposes. At this point, no telling what might go in there or when. It's because of its location, it's not going to be prime property for development. But if it is developed, it will be subject to a site plan and half-street improvements will be required. It's my understanding.
Half-street improvements would be required?
Is the, anyone else here?
Move for the option, the ordinance.
I think the property owners are here. And the agent for the, and the agent for the property owners, do you want to address any of these questions?
I think Ken had a motion.
Well, Phil, Phil, for a second. Of course, my grandfather. Ma'am, can we have your name and address, please?
I'm Tricia Goodson. Uh, I'm the oldest daughter of Fred Rain. Uh, his father bought that property in nineteen twenty-eight and it's been in our family ever since. Um, my address is twenty-seven, twenty-one seventeen North Amburran Street in Little Rock. And I am continually, in this moment, completely employed. So, yeah, and my concern is I don't, it just seems such a waste. I'm sorry, can you hear me better now? Uh, is that I don't, I'm not comfortable with that land just sitting there forever. And I would really like to, um, I've done, we've done some research about this sort of thing. It has to be something, I don't know if any of you even know it, but the reason North Hills Exceptional Children's School is there in that particular place is because I have a severely retarded sister. And there was no facilities, public education did not provide for those children. Um, we had seven children and one teacher in a little haunted hut from the Camp Robinson after World War Two, and that was the original little school. And it was right on the, in, in what, where the tennis courts are now, basically in the main part of, or where Sherwood used to be the main part. And, um, it, I would love to see something gentle, perhaps the school taking it over. Um, I don't know, I've kind of talked to them a little bit about it, um, but not much. And I've sort of given things over to these people who know more about it. I have not lived in Sherwood since nineteen seventy-eight. So, um, I'm not cognizant of a lot of stuff. But I hate to see that land just sitting there. So that's why I'm here is because I would like to find a good usage. And I'm learning a lot because I didn't know anything about all this zoning stuff.
Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Goodson? All right, Ken, go ahead and make your motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, second.
Motion and second if you'll call the roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Keplinger.
An ordinance granting a conditional use for fifty-three twelve General Samuel's Road to allow for a church in an R one zone, imposing conditions thereto and for other purposes.
Move to approve.
Yeah. Has anybody driven out there? I'll second that now. Has anybody driven out there besides me?
Well, yeah.
It's in the middle of Jacksonville, this one little square acre of Sherwood.
Second.
It is.
All right, so we have a motion by all, uh, Councilmember Harmon, by Keplinger, if you'll call the roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Kep, Keplinger.
Aye.
An ordinance granting a conditional use for eight fourteen Bryce and three additional parcels to allow for a church in an R one zone, imposing conditions thereto and for other purposes.
On this one, I note that the recommendation from the, um, planning commission comes with that our, that our approval be conditioned on making the structure ADA accessible, a sidewalk be constructed from the present carport to the parking lot to enable ADA access, repave the front driveway, any driveway alterations or addition of the parking lot require approval of a site plan by staff. And at least fifty percent of the trees in excess of six-foot caliper currently present on the site be retained. I would make my motion to approve, can, subject to all those conditions.
I would second that.
Okay. Then I have a question for Mr. Middleton. Having read the proposal from that church with regard to their, their use of that land, um, they say that they are not going to, to, they're going to use the building and leave the rest of it as is, rest of the track as is, that they're not going to do any additional parking. Um, and there'd be no new building construction. So why are the trees even being discussed? At first, I was thinking, okay, they need more parking, they're going to knock all the trees down. But in their proposal, they're saying they're not going to do any more construction, they don't need any more parking. So rather than fifty percent of the trees, why aren't we just leaving all the trees? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking the question. Because if you're putting in a condition of keeping fifty percent of the trees, it implied to me something else is going to occur to knock those trees down. Am I making sense?
Well, this doesn't, this applies for the future. I mean, we can't keep them from developing in the future.
I mean, that's in their proposal.
We, we had residents at the meeting though, that, that I wanted to ensure that this buffer remained. That's what I remember.
I read that as well.
The biggest problem, the biggest complaint, the biggest objection that we were hearing early on was that they didn't want them to extend that parking lot.
Correct.
Was their biggest fear. The truth of the matter is they never intended to do that. They said that the house is going to be used only for staff, for meetings and, but not for residential purposes. Uh, the property owners, especially those next door, were concerned that any kind of future development not occur. If there was a proposal for future development, that would violate the conditional use. So it would have to come in for something else.
Okay.
You have a motion in a sec.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Senior Citizens Committee, Sewer Committee, Street Committee.
Street Committee did not meet, uh, we will meet at our normal time in July.
And we have some exciting news.
Hey, there is really good news. We're, we're going to start doing a lot of construction and engineering and so forth, and Richard's going to be really busy.
Job security.
Buckle up, ham and ham.
And thank you for your leadership on that, Kevin.
Outstanding job.
And I, I'd like to call our city engineer, Richard Penn, uh, please.
If I may back up just one step, I'm, I did have something to say about the sewer. Today, we did submit the first step in consent administrative order with the health department. So that is done. And, uh, Brockington Road pump station improvements, the station is operating now. All of that's starting to get a whole lot better.
Good, we'd like to hear that.
And, and we are already working on the, uh, street improvements.
Thank you.
Kevin, did you have anything?
Um, all, uh, Councilmember Haile has a question for you.
Um, during the election, we had, it, a lot was talked about, um, about the Brockington corridor area and partnering with R dot. Have we started engaging with, um, R dot to, to see about a study?
We have engaged in the study, but not specifically with R dot. But it will definitely include them when we get to that point, but yes.
For that area that used to be, you know, between Keel, used to be Brookswood, between Keel and the access road specifically?
Specifically, the project we're looking at includes everything necessary to fix the problem. Which is from the traffic signal and some parts north on Brockington.
Okay.
All the way out onto one sixty seven.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution in support of regional cooperation to address behavioral health issues in our community, authorizing execution of agreements and for other purposes.
Good for the jobs for your resolution.
Second.
You have, did you have a question?
No, we just had a motion in a sec.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
McMahon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, that is the agenda.
Thank you. Is there any old business? Any new business? Chamber Fish Fries Thursday.
That's announcements.
I know, but it's business. We help support the chamber. All right, let me go back to old business. Um, did, so our city engineer, did you have anything to report on the former library site? I was just informed that you might have something to report.
We did have a, uh, walkthrough with the, uh, council last meeting, just before the council meeting. And at that time, we were still in a position of not knowing exactly everything we might want to do. At this point, I think you've seen some of the new, uh, levels of development that we're at now. We're down from the six to eight hundred thousand down to the five hundred thousand range. We're focusing in better on it. But at this point, the architect has graciously given us all of their work in expectation of being paid at some point. And I would like to, uh, request again, if you could, to consider approving their fee, which was one of the original requests about two, three, three months ago, I believe. It had simply been tabled, I believe. And that amount was not to exceed sixty-four thousand five hundred. That would, that's a not to exceed amount, that's not what we're going to pay them. Not a lump sum, that is to pay in small pieces to get them caught up to where we are today.
Yeah.
Wait, since it wasn't on the agenda, we.
Right.
We would have to have somebody, um, make a motion to spin the rules or we, otherwise we're going to have to wait till next month. And we don't have an ordinance ready. So I don't think that.
That's fine. If you're, if you would please give me your feedback in the next few days.
Okay.
Um, individually, if you'd like, and just let me know that you're in agreement with the direction that I'm going or you'd like to see something else produced. Be happy to get that for you and, uh, see if we can move this ahead by next meeting.
Does anyone have any questions on that? All right, sorry about that. Um, under the new business, you did mention the fish fry. So, um, I think everybody up here knows, and a lot of people in the audience know that, um, Arkansas Municipal League lost their executive director, uh, yesterday. And I was just texted that the visitation is from five to seven Thursday evening at Ruble Funeral Home. And the funeral will be at one o'clock Friday at Emmanuel Baptist Church in Little Rock. So I did want to make that announcement. And, um, he was a great friend to the city of Sherwood. I know, uh, Chief Teague was talking about the NarCam. Um, he started all this opioid legislation for the cities, um, to get involved in. And he was, um, true, he'll truly be missed. Under announcements, Sherwood Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association on the border will donate twenty percent of your bill to the Sherwood Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association on the following dates, July nineteenth, August sixteenth, September twentieth, October eighteenth, November fifteenth and September twentieth. And Papa Murphy's will donate a percentage on June twenty-eighth, July twenty-sixth, August thirtieth, September twenty-seventh, October twenty-fifth, November and twenty-ninth and December twenty-seventh. If anyone needs those dates again, um, I'll be happy to give them to them after the meeting. The Fourth of July celebration that we have every year is going to be on the Fourth of July at six o'clock. At Sherwood Forest, uh, we give away free hot dogs and bottled water and chips while supplies last. We'll have fireworks at nine. And, uh, this year, guys, we don't need help wrapping the hot dogs. We have a, someone that's going to do that for us, but you're always welcome to help hand them out. All helps, always appreciated, so want to let y'all know that. Sherwood Animal Shelter Events, Independence Day event, free adoptions and free food on July third. And National Butt Day is July thirty-first, so there's also free adoptions that day. The first annual Puppy Palooza Cool Paw Tea, that's P A W T Y, like, like a paw, tea, at Fairway Pool and Dog Park coming in August. And the date will be announced later, or you can check the, uh, Sherwood Animal Shelter Facebook page.
Madam Chair, I've got one more announcement I'd like to make.
That's great.
One recognition for sure. Uh, our chief of police, uh, Jim Bedwell, was elected the chief of the year for the state of Arkansas. State of Arkansas through the FOP, so I want to congratulate him tonight on that award.
Stand up, Pete. Stand up, make your accolade. There you go. Congratulations to you. Are there any other announcements?
I took this thunder.
Me too, Jern. Thank you.